All right, Jay, you're in. Okay. We'll open the yard assembly point one. First item I need to adjourn is approved in previous minutes. We're going to have a clean review. Is there any comments, questions?
You know where that is.
Oh, yeah, so I'm just asking.
Okay.
I want to prove step change. Want to make second?
Second.
All bear, I both carry. Jay, come on.
I have been in contact with man. If you have a trainings that go for next month. So that we have to August fourth meeting at 5:00 P. M. For preference. Pizza salad and soda will be better one time. By P. M. Yep. On two potential topics were discussed. The zoning revisions that have been enacted. As well as the intersection of land use and ag market law. Do you guys have a preference? For which dollar?
I would say that is the news on it.
Yeah. I'll tap this step. And if you do them like this one. If not, we will move on to open. Now, we remember, do you reflect on you?
Okay.
We have drawings, John.
Yes. Yeah. So this is last.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. My name is Maria Vernon from Vernon Home Studio, and I welcome everyone for your time and creation for this project. So thank you again for all your comments, and I just wanted to say that from last meeting. Our clients have retained Pat Pendergast to work with us. To work on the sighting and work on finding, you know. Finding a way to make Mike DiRusio's design for the septic system work with a grading on the site, and you can see that in the plan today. Pat has also, along with the clients and ourselves, filed and received acknowledgement for an N. O. I. For the SWIP. And Pat has also prepared the SWIP we have here. Would you like it or?
Yes.
We can leave a copy with day. And we also have, and Jamie, we also emailed. I don't think we emailed you the SWIP because it's so big, but you have the acknowledgement.
Yeah.
But we can leave cards copies as well. And we will be working with Pat, who will be doing the SWIP inspections during the construction process. But as you can see, the design prepared by Mike DiRusio does not change. It's just that the grading and the site design are. Cinematch.
What is the final step of the septic design of my? It's a tentative design that something.
Okay, yes, so Mike just wants to be because the last. The last test that was dug in 2019. So he just wants to be on site for the next one, but he's fine with doing that. And I believe he had submitted an email or a letter to that effect. That he's fine with the septic design as is, but. The condition is that he will be there on site to approve. The actual deal.
Because it's a fill system.
I'm sorry.
Fill system.
Yes.
Right there.
I'm just ready then.
Um, you did that give you any indication on the cut and fill? Is it a plus or minus? No?
What do you mean?
Try to figure the balance between what you cut and what you fill, or you're bringing material in?
I don't believe that we're bringing material in. I think Pat might be actually on Zoomed. Can we see him at all? I can't hear.
Okay, yeah, I'm here, guys. Thanks. It's Pat Pendergast. Yeah, there's no, there's no cutting for the septic system. It's strictly fill. You only bring in fill for a fill bed. You have to leave the existing topsoil as is.
No, for the entire site where what is, is there a balance of cut and fill and bringing?
Yeah, it's pretty much, it's pretty much a cut and fill. We've got some, we got some cutting up around the backside of the house. And then bring in a little bit of fill to the front, so they shouldn't have to remove very much from the site at all. They can probably, they could probably lose it all right there on the site and seed it.
So you don't have to bring anything in.
I don't think so. I mean, you know, you got to bring in stone for the septic system laterals and things like that, but that's about it. They're not going to have to be trucking in a bunch of stuff.
The only other thing is. When you go to dig for the house, your maximum height is right there. So if you make any changes or hit rock or decide to raise the house, you're going to have a zoning issue. Just maybe you're aware of that.
Right, no, we understand that.
Okay. Other than that, I think the plan is fine. It's everything.
It's everything, yeah. Karen, any questions? Comments? Comment? What's your motion for?
It's in place to happen.
Okay. That's right. Most main second?
Second.
All bear, I both. Derek and both in total. No, but in this and. Well, when we help that there. Correct.
And at which point do we need, I mean, obviously.
You would, that would be something that would be required prior to the granting of a C. L. to that part of the block.
So you can proceed.
Great.
But nothing to happen if that's.
Of course, understood. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
All bear, both. Yeah, the water fill and. May Burger's on.
Actually not May Burger anymore. We purchased from May Burger. It's under Spring Gruff Homes. Yep, so this, what we're proposing for you is on lot one. You guys gave us permission to do a three lot subdivision. We've already sold off lot three. And are getting ready to start marketing lot two. So what you're seeing is our build per lot one, which we will most likely be moving into because that's what we've kind of been doing for the last eight years. We move every two years. So. This is actually going to be my house.
At the file.
Yes. Yep. Yep, babe, we got a building permit. We are almost through getting the shared portion of the driveway in. And we wanted to get that done before we marketed particle two. Yeah. What doesn't look so good are the trees. It was so overgrown with vines up there. That we're having to really come and take them back and save some of the really nice trees. Nobody did anything up there for years. But we have found some really nice stones too, so that was exciting.
Yeah, I don't know. Do you know copy of maps?
Of the subdivision map? Oh, yeah, he's got piles of those. We killed several trees.
Yeah, so the new law that we're going to be looking at too, the local number six. That has, that has been, it is local law, it's not. You know, so the new local law number set that were.
We're on the.
I know that. But there's items on here that refer to site plan review.
Okay, yeah, that hasn't been.
This is not enacted yet. This has not been passed as a law yet.
Correct, the one that was.
All that we wanted to submit to us from review? Yeah, no, that didn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nori, you have approval on.
We, yeah, we got the subdivision approval done. That's all filed. Mike DiRusio wanted one change on the septic plan, which the engineers are doing now. Just for the, yeah, for this specific house. Just for this house. Yeah, he wants one change on it for this house. I don't know. The engineers decided they were going to try and turn it around to me this week with his change.
There was not a big deal.
No. They had sent him their engineer plans and he sent them back wanting one change. So we should have those next week.
So you're building a house and a guest house?
Yes.
We tell one, we change. You're having kitchen. There's some square footage issues. Those we have to. Yeah. But it was a thousand feet, not three.
Wendy, this is Wendy West, our architect. So do you have any questions?
Yeah. Did you look at any going?
Phone unit, but I'm not terribly familiar with your code, so it could be that I missed it. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little. It's a little, a little. You don't have a civil engineer?
We do have a civil engineer. Yeah, it's Crawford.
Did he do a grading plan?
He did a grading plan for the subdivision for the road. For the road, yeah. But we're not grading too terribly much for the house. It's a one floor house, basically. And we're not digging a basement. Well, yeah, not for the guest house.
Yeah, I can't read the concrete or silver. There's quite a bit of grade change through this project.
Like eleven feet from.
Yeah.
It's more than seven feet from there.
Yeah. Yes.
And they're all separate.
This part of the house has a. That will be exposed. Yeah. Where people would grade kind of what the grades, the only, only thing that I would. This property out here is your huge flat area.
Yeah.
But otherwise, this has got to be.
So basically, we took the grade that is existing or right at the back of it and went to the middle of it down because it was punctual as a porch and we have a park and law. And then the grade is naturally called off as you go down. And we do have to go up a little bit around the base, just so that we don't have double step sections on the house. But it's mental. I mean, the idea is that it's kind of just following. Or do you look down, still think that it was funny?
What I'm seeing here, as you said first, is that the septic structure, if it's less than a thousand square feet, it would. Come under the interior site on the B. Blocker, which is what we're doing right now.
Yep.
If it's over thousand, there'd be a fire site manager. Which is within the requirement.
Is there a zoning component to that too, like an area restriction that we would need to get a Z. B. A. variance for it? Best in.
Okay.
You know, it's because the issue is less than thousand feet, we can.
Did you break that up in the calculation?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, here we go. So main residence.
Yeah, thirteen, we have fourteen hundred square feet.
Well, so then the points will be reduced.
We've given it thirty feet by three hundred ninety two square feet. Three hundred ninety two square feet. Or.
Or just do the public hearing.
Or do the public hearing.
But don't let through a public hearing for the whole house too or not. We don't have to, you don't have to do the public hearing because that's.
Because of the.
Correct.
So then just proceed with the public hearing.
Yeah.
Public hearing.
Okay.
Well. Give me the grading plan.
Yeah.
It is all finished, Florida locations. We made the last app. Okay, go back to the. Just.
That's no problem. We can get you the revised.
You're so close to the area. And when you do a grading plan, it really brings out the short call. And.
You have the, I do have the elevations.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not. You know, give me a finish.
We can have a civil engineer do a grading.
And transfer the finish for elevation. Because I can't.
Yeah, of course.
You want to?
It's not there. That's why you can't see it.
So yeah, so if you're looking to proceed in that vein, based on Joe's comment, as far as the area disturbance and the great point, great plan, that.
Is there anything else you see? We're going to go back and revise. Yeah. Yeah, let's get a good list. Yep.
Is it correct to assume that the area disturbance needs to stand or an acre or that triggers yet another?
What?
Which I mean, you may want to just go for the SWIP if you don't.
Yeah, the last.
One of us is that, what's the process?
Your, your engineer.
Okay.
Well. We actually gave you disturbance that includes the driveway. The driveway has a separate building permit and it's going to be done and complete before I start this project.
That's not. Separate that and your, and your calculation here is very bold.
Well, we completed it.
Offset of the area.
Yeah, but this.
We have the red one. That was the shared.
And that, and that point, yeah, without a greater plan, though, you really don't know if the earth service.
You'd be surprised, yeah.
I would be shocked. But we'll get it on.
I would be shocked too.
You only have a few thousand feet.
If you put it on paper and exactly what you didn't work, the area disturbance, then and you're under the answer, then you don't go.
Right, only got twenty five hundred.
But if you're really close.
Yeah.
I, it's up to you, but I would recommend you go for SWIP. It's back off.
Okay.
I guess. You have, you have a right to do that, notice that you're going to have a public hearing, you know, it's going to be a month from now.
The problem with these areas of disturbance is bulldozers don't make ninety degrees.
Sure, sure.
And, and, you know.
I gave the thirty, the offset from the building. We did pretty generous.
Well, it is if you're not regrading. I mean, here's one, here's one that we kicked back. This was under, now it's a half acre over. So that's the grading plan that was developed.
Now I understand. Did you include the?
No, no. And we feel. I know the game is try to stay under, but. We catch it.
Fair enough.
It has to be wrote in it.
It does.
But it does not affect it.
It's wrote down.
So does the road need to be included, the portion of the driveway that's on our parcel?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the road, the road exists.
The road.
But the driveway connecting to the road.
That has to be.
Yeah. Yeah, we had.
Yeah, yeah.
Driveway is half an acre. You can back that out of these.
Not even.
They're not in there now.
They are. But that's a different calculation.
Right. Right, that's totally different.
Yes.
The red area is inside the third.
So you put that in there.
Area of site. Forty one.
Yeah, she wrote, she wrote also in. There you're looking at. The least field, which is out here, and then you're looking at what are you going to do? But you're going, you're going to be all the way.
You've checked it for a moment longer and corrected.
No, with that, we're definitely.
All right, so we have our two things for Crawford.
The board may want to see it on the plan for next meeting.
Can we get the stream labeled on the plan and show the, it's still a hundred foot far. It's sure going to change any minute now, but.
What is it changed to when you're?
Hundred and fifty. So just, since you're doing after all, yeah.
No question, Tom. Anyone see him? I think.
You said this.
Yeah.
Road control, thunder action, your roof drainage, it's got to go somewhere and not over the septic.
All right. Everyone's in agreement?
Yeah, they have to decide if they're doing a public hearing or not.
Yeah, I think you decide one.
We are going to do that, yes. We'll keep the accessory dwelling unit at this.
You may have to go back to the code and see if there's any differences.
Yeah, I would definitely take a look at that.
There's a list of.
For accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, there, there is one more.
Yeah. Under, under the spec plan review, it's a totally different process than this, so it's going to be different information that you have to pull from that. Section of the zone.
Specifically on A. D. Us.
You better look at the previous site plan review in the vote and the site plan review. There's different criteria for each one. Make sure you address the criteria for site plan review, because that's what this is true.
Right. I was just asking if there's anything specific in the site plan review for A. D. Us.
Not, not off the top of my head. I think, you know, I think that's what you need to look at. You know.
Well. So we're probably going to need like erosion control plan. Yeah.
And there might be something about parking too.
Well, all the parking.
Park it.
No, all the parking will be up top, and that's why there's a path to walk down.
Yeah.
We're not going to park down there.
Yeah, I think, you know, give us as much detail on all of that as you can, so that we can at least try and streamline the process.
Yep.
I mean, I don't want to keep reminding, we find something else, and when I'm going to do that, we're trying to make this.
That's why I was curious if you saw anything else.
And now we should do a different category. You know, I think you need to take a hard look at what that entails and address that. Jay, you have any comments?
Do you want me to move, or is it for the August fourth meeting?
If they, if they believe they can be ready for the meeting.
We'll be ready. We'll be ready.
Okay.
We'll try.
To your side engine.
So what would the submission date be for that meeting?
January five.
Fourth of July. Fourth of Monday.
Okay, thank you.
There's no dispensation for getting the material here because it's a public hearing.
Right. Yeah, I understand.
If you're a day late.
Yeah, we are.
Yep.
So. Sky.
We're going to down and we.
Need agency and then.
You should already have the ad hoc statement, and we do say E. A. S. Part one too. So you should have both of those already.
So more to discuss.
So.
Want to make second?
Second.
All bear. All, Derek, motion to play with agency. Want to move? Want to buy second? Yeah. All bear.
Yeah, secret, yeah, that's.
And. No joint speakers.
We would still only need.
So.
All bear. All, Derek.
Sing it out.
Thank you.
I'm having soft. Let's go. Everybody on.
Good.
I don't know your scale. So I was before, you know, in twenty twenty. So I need to be able to go back in your mind.
We can't remember that.
Absolutely not being a problem. You want to throw on there? There is there. So it's actually farm which stretches on E. Two, Prospect Hill and Chase Road. Originally had a railroad that ran through it that went from Pine Plains and cut up into Ancremdale. When railroads were abandoned and taken over, they were sold back to the old farmers and they sold them from station numbers, the station numbers. They didn't actually sell them to actual pottery line. So with that. So, uh, with that said, if you look. The Sausage Farm structures out, they went to that station number, but they have this near east. That hits out, Bowel Chase Road, which comes out, uh, which is. Picked up there, picked up there, which is pretty much here, so the railroad came through just like that, and then continued on, Big Time Play. Uh, when Sausage haven't ever done anything, any old railroad grade is there, the tree runs through it, there's wetlands there. Uh, the cases that have their cows on there and have had for quite a long time. Uh, the burling hogs, it kind of sticks out in their field, they have, they grow flowers and bushes here now, um, so really. So what they want to do is they want straight now, uh, the Sausage gave a, uh. Conservation easement to the Columbia Land Conservancy, the Columbia Land Conservancy, uh, did not take an easement on the porch in south of Chase Road, which we're talking about here. Uh, so all acroly, some of it could be built, but because of the wetlands, the water, there's never gonna be anything built there. So what they're trying to do is they worked, worked out where, uh, Chase Lions would get a small piece and Burling Hoss would get a small piece. Kind of give them their privacy and straighten out the piece that the Sausage never used. Uh, so Burling Hoss, uh, currently on County Route E two and County Line, uh, currently owns twenty-three point six eight acres. Mayor gonna get two pieces, parcel one C and parcel one D A, uh, parcel one C. Is that what triangle is this, and one D A?
Adding terms of.
We were at the end of the way.
Well, one D, this triangle, and then this piece will be added to that piece. Uh, to create a new area of twenty-four point seven zero, and when I was in there in two thousand, they were only gonna give them a small little triangle piece. And, uh, then this all came to fruition instead of doing this multiple times, we said, we're gonna do it once and do it right. And then it took a long, long time to get before you. Uh, then parcel one D B will be get, get it added to the Chase Home Farm, Chase Lions.
So that.
Yes.
I'm not understanding. Why is this one out?
So Asasmi owns this piece like this and this piece like this.
So why is there this one?
Well, that's just knowing what's existing, and then the way I'm looking for it, and it's going to it. So the new line will be.
The this is the existing one?
Right. And then the new line.
Again.
If this is the railroad, what happened to the rest?
So it continues out, and then these people own from this station on, and they actually own into Duxes County as well. And Asasmi owns way up almost to where the Vina Dam is on, on E two area, but we sit all the time.
No easements or anything on this stuff. What's that? No easements or anything, farmers and somebody that's writing a way or something.
No, they gave it to them as this.
Yeah, it was, it was E title, uh, taking over for a while, for a while, everyone just used it, but then the railroad realized that. They had this land that they could sell and make money off of, and they were all, yeah, bankrupt at that point anyway, so the railroad collected what they could and sold them all. So very, very cheap.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's that one, there's something.
There, there's nothing on, on this, there's nothing on what you're saying, sir. There is a, and Chase Lions has one.
The second application is not gonna do it.
Alright. Yeah, so. How you doing, John? Yeah. The board's saying we're just going looking, you know. For a while on government. So. So, um, the public here. Alright, so. Yeah, the boards and, and they're all except the motion for type two action.
So.
Motion made second. All favor. Both, Gary and motion to approve.
Yeah.
Yeah, do that.
Okay, and then all today's, sorry.
Yeah, you open this can fill if we're, if we're.
Okay.
But either way. Either way.
Okay.
Okay, uh, motion approved. Motion made second. All favor. Alright, both, Gary.
You gotta file.
You claim. What if you select? I say I can find it tonight, it's not gonna be.
Please, again, on.
Alright.
They have her.
All ready to go, right, the guy was doing it. Put together, I can take back a part now. Just. Put together. Always doing, I just don't know.
You got a drawing, you're one on one.
So this is the, the same property, uh, but you can see where the point was that we just did it. This is also a parcel that is on the other side of Prospect Hill, so this is where we just were. If you pull up Prospect Hill, we're on the other side. We're gonna here, and we're on the other side of Prospect Hill. This also, and that's probably the, uh, the numbering on the other one with one D B A, right, is because. Because I want, I want everything to correspond to the conservation easement, which is filed, so the, this one B in the conservation easement was, was left out as well. So ev- everything here was in the conservation easement, this piece, and this piece was not. So everything here is in the conservation easement, this piece and this piece was not. Everything here is in the conservation easement, and that has both pieces and that piece was not. Uh, he currently, Daniel currently lives in the house of a farmer. Uh, if you are familiar with site, you probably seen Ronnie Sauson pass away not too long ago, they have done some estate planning. His son, uh, now owns the property as a trustee, uh, they've been building on the house to get in there with their kids to, uh, to live there. Uh, Ronnie unfortunately passed away, Kathy's still alive and needs help. So, uh, what, what they're trying to do is they're gonna get rid of all of these parcels eventually. Um, so this one is five point nine zero acres, which is currently part, half parcel of farm. And what they want to do is subdivision there, obviously, I, you know, I realize I didn't put the hundred foot offset. Uh, they did have a excavator and they have, uh, the health department out there. I had not gotten out there to locate the test, but somewhere in this area here. Again, I'm just looking for sketch plan approval tonight. Somewhere in this area here. I believe he's also talked with the highway superintendent and gotten a, uh, driveway permit, I don't have any of those documentation tonight, I would, uh, suppose I would have them definitely for next meeting.
This is something that's building why.
Correct.
Alright, so.
What is this?
It proves this. Yeah.
You're thinking this off the bat?
No.
Oh, you're thinking this off the bat?
This is coming with it. Here, here.
So how do they cross over this now?
They don't.
So that's where the driveway would be?
Yes.
Again.
So we'll put the hundred foot off there on there. Um, any specity notes that should be on there as well that you're thinking that you would like, or?
That parcel is fifty because that's gonna be, uh, one incident.
Oh, it's a hundred and fifty, it's gonna change now, okay.
So start getting used to it.
Should we, uh, should we include the, uh, uh, the notes that we did for? The one application, you know, overcoventments about, uh, habitats that we kind of made up, I thought that was.
So with the new, uh.
Just a string.
Yeah.
With the new stream buffer law that's gonna go into effect, so two things is, one thing for all site plans is it has to be called out and shown on the, this is what. And, um, so this, you know, this undisturbed vegetation buffer will, will go with it, and so that would be really nice to have that on the plan. We invited them, you know. Undisturbed.
Your way that you.
It is honor, but.
Yeah.
It's not both, it's.
It's not, it's not, it's not the law yet, I mean, this is.
We're gonna have it, we're gonna have it. We actually got to practice two, and we're hoping to do it because they decided they're not doing anything right here.
So also, that twenty-five feet is the law now, that's not changing.
No, that's not, but.
But that's what I'm saying, to put that note, you're asking what other note to put on there, it is about not to disturb for that.
You're not crossing this, you're putting it off of this.
Yeah.
What's the title of that?
Just, um, both the ones I said.
You have questions, Tommy? Bill, a building involved? Yeah.
So is it, is it mostly wooded or is it open? Mostly wooded.
It's mostly, it's mostly wooded, it's mostly.
So I didn't check on the back, yeah, I only just thought that the street, oh, I don't. I don't think it's a D E C thing.
No, you know, it, it doesn't run all the time, more, you know, I'll say drainage ditch, but, you know, I'm sure it's on there, it's not a classified.
It's a plant, need drought. Stop being part of anybody. Or part, I've seen those before.
I believe, well, I don't check, I believe it's all.
Um, can motion for. Case line through.
What's that?
Motion made second.
Second.
All favor.
Okay.
Both. Gary, and motion for lead.
For what?
Lead agency.
Okay.
Motion made second. Go.
Second.
All favor.
The proposal, they fall asleep.
Alright, Wes, you want to do?
Oh, man, we're gonna say the public carries for.
Yeah, I, well, you think you'd be ready?
Yep.
Ten days ahead. Ten days before.
I'm gonna be ready.
Was it twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
So we're getting a little bit of that.
Well, then.
Alright, all favor, uh, I'm both, Gary.
Thank you, everybody. Actually, uh, there's you didn't. Yeah, you know, man, I gotta, I gotta get ready for that.
Where's the van?
Oh, thank you, sir. I will listen, I don't know what to do unless I'm.
Sorry, you're flying for it, boy.
John, is it alright to leave those maps here with Jay, and I can just pick up the?
I'm gonna sign tonight, you can pick it up.
Pick them up next one, thank you. Thank you very much, well.
Okay, Bill, you're up.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Bill Bro, for all you who don't know me, I live on South Lane, uh. Turned seventy in April, and time for a little bit of change, so I decided to sell my farm, but I want to separate my house from the rest of it. Um, we give it that. It's not by, not, not, not used by, not, uh, that. And the, the, the man here, Helen, he, he's, uh. Obviously, the hand, you know. This is a mark, uh, particularly something that I have my, uh. My, my, uh, but I'm, so they're gonna see exactly how, uh, how it's gonna be.
Is this a loser then?
This and this are together.
Right now.
And that's press line. These numbers here, whatever they are, were on the original subdivision when Dr. All, who I brought. And I want to separate them, you know, when I have my house. So when the time comes for somebody buys the rest of it, I don't want to be doing this with them, waiting, and get home, get me.
So you're selling the?
Uh, well, I have this and this for sale, eighteen acres.
And one, so, yeah, is this gonna be one thing, or?
Well, at this point, if I have a mortgage built on this, so I don't, I don't want to combine these two. I want to separate my house, and have this is one and this is one, but they're going together.
Okay, so they're two separate deeds that sound together, so you want to separate, basically you want to separate this?
Yeah, this is already separated by the law.
Right, but you want to.
Right, I want this to be an entity by itself, and this is two, this already is. But it's, it's all going together.
Right, right.
But the reason that I don't want to, a lot of line adjustments, because I still have a mortgage, and I don't want to join a mortgage property in the non, I have no mortgage. You following that?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a mortgage on this here, and I have no mortgage on you. I don't want to combine two properties, where one has a mortgage and one doesn't, so at the end, I don't have anybody to put a cap on. I figure if I can get this done anyway, then all of that, all that stuff is done, so. You know, the package is the way it was done, and.
Bill, I have to take it out, that part of this lot, correct?
And I have all the paperwork. For where the stuff is and, and everything. Basically, it's rated, it's rated bad, it's rated.
Yeah, we gotta be sure.
I only have one copy of this, and that's the pass, but this, this is what the county has in an error.
The survey is kind of, yeah. Disturbing that.
I realize that now, but I mean, like you said, this, this is showing in the app of this.
And he's gonna have to. So what you're looking to do, Bill, is you're gonna, this is a lot, this is a lot, and you can.
That's it, that, that's my game. And, and again, the reason I'm doing this is mortgage, no more. Yeah, a lot of line adjustments combined, one that is and one that isn't.
But how is that working to have a mortgage?
So seven block?
Yeah, so they.
I'll, I'll just say all.
Bank has to relieve one of yours.
It's all, and nothing is changing.
Well, as far as the bank is concerned, it is.
It's all one property, that's the way that, that's the way that the tax bill comes, as one.
Right, that you're gonna be, it's gonna be.
But it's, it's all comes to, but I mean, nothing's changing in that respect.
That's not our real.
That's, that's a more favorable.
Yeah.
I'm not worried about that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Still write up the check, everyone.
Yeah, I would check with your bank to make sure, because if this was assessed as one property with the value of a mortgage, you're taking this away from this, they may have a problem with that.
I actually.
All right, you can, you can try. And you own both, and you probably can't sell. You can't sell it without changing your mortgage, with bank, your original bank.
Yeah, the mortgage's gotta be settled before you sell.
Right, yeah.
No matter how, everyone would buy it.
Cause the.
So I wonder if this is a non-performing, we don't have any dimensions on here. So this one is like, this, this, here, I mean, it was, it's.
Our house was built in eighty-nine or eight. So. All of that, all of that information that's coming in over here, hold up, hold something, stop how your rest is, are over here, so.
So then, is there like a bathroom and water?
Power and then there's gonna have some.
We go here to start.
It's not a, it's not, not a separate for house.
Yeah.
The well is on the, the well. The well, well. That doesn't feed the bar.
No, well, the bar.
We'll say they have thirty dimensions.
Oh, one.
Yes.
Other than the monthly coverage last time. At times, but yeah.
No, Jay's already.
Yeah, probably maybe might have to come up with this problem on this.
Yeah, I realize that all those things are, I mean, but I put this together quick, like the surveyor can give this condition, so that he would, you could see what I'm talking. And even if we do the other one, this was all, I'm sure there's an asset to the property, this is correct. That's why. I could be a little blind if I didn't have to satisfy the mortgage first, I wanna make this part of that, yeah.
The only change is in the, the law, there was like, um, small lines, somebody had to figure out, they can just call a higher maximum. We're doing natural priority. And I'm like, he's the right one, okay.
It's, it's back here and not going to stack that someone here.
Wasn't there something not here somewhere linked with, we should do it one time for. After we had less than, yeah, less, yeah.
Yeah.
We got more than.
Lot, it's a lot, there was something.
Yeah, there was like a.
You know, so the act district was three handbakers, you know, towing, so a lot of them down. Uh, as long as, as long as the averaging of the lots is good, they're fine. So in this case, in this case, you've got seven point two plus the one point four, so eight point six, you're averaging four point.
Yeah, more, yeah.
Downputting the right.
Not, not counting that one separately. So from that standpoint, from the.
It is looking at giving you an increment.
Incremental, but you know, four hundred, five hundred, something like that, so it seems, seems very loosey-goosey.
You've been up to.
It's all going to be busy in the act district, yeah.
Yeah, but you've been up to Carson Road, project we improved like a year ago, not for the.
Oh, yeah?
Really bad. But I use that. And it's, yeah.
I noticed that ma- giant mound in the back.
The, the front yard setback to the act district would be altered.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be thirty.
It's a, it's a monster right there.
You pull up, and it's not because I live on a block, you know, just being sort of aesthetic, so.
I mean, let me ask this question. Initially, I wanted to do a lot line adjustment, and my thought was, if I do a lot line adjustment and I get the okay, I can sit up. But until I sell, but I was informed by a surveyor, not this, that once that happened. It ha- I have to, it has to happen within thirty days, I can't sit on your okay, that that's, that's all right.
What would be the?
Excuse me?
What would be the lot line adjustment?
There to there. Basically.
To get rid of this.
Basically, it's the same, yeah, but again, I don't wanna do that.
Well, you can just do that when you're ready to do it.
Excuse me?
You can just do that when you're ready, when you're ready.
Yeah, the. Kinda get all, I'm kinda getting this out of the way, I may have somebody who's, who's in. I mean, I'm very optimistic, I'm trying to get all this stuff. Flowing, so.
You're gonna stay in them.
Absolutely. I'm gonna try to move on.
I think you have ninety days after we give approval for.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Or the approval lapses.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
But all you would have to do is file a map when we count it, and it rolls, and then.
Then it's concentrated, right? You wanna change it back, you gotta undo it.
Yeah, I, I also just don't know how, that's gonna be again, I'm, I don't know how that would work by the fact that part of this is more, part of this, I, I don't know. The part of this is more, the part of this not, I don't know how this would work, he moved his lot line. Took the fact.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I don't know from a legal standpoint.
I wouldn't wanna do that until, until, I mean, rather do it, I would rather do it than have two separate tax bills.
I thi- I think from our standpoint, I think you're probably doing it the best way you could.
Gets the surveyor to actually do that, to meet that, to be, that'll show up if the bank is on your deed, right? Now that was.
Yeah. Tax bill is gonna be the same.
I know, but the ownership is different. I mean, I mean, it's, it's, you have a deed, yes.
Ownership is the same.
Yeah.
At least we had this issue with Donna Tech piece that you got to do for something, the guy built a barn and you had this, can't go on her.
This whole, this whole thing has been in existence. It's eighty-nine.
Should be, you're fun, you should be able to.
And I don't wanna do it anymore.
This is creating a lot around. I guess.
Um, so this is just an informational meeting tonight.
Yes. Yeah, the, the one is the only difference is that, um, two thousand, the previous by ten thousand people left. They're permitted, more than the, the rear cycle. And one more, which square footage during this one. It is.
Oh, man, eleven thousand, I think?
See, that may require a, a, a recycler view at the same time, that's a subdivision, we may look at that. It may require a Z V cycle interview for the barn on the other piece, if you're though existing, right, you wanna create that lot and the one is there, we may do a recycler interview at the same time. Well, it says, permitted to thousand per year left, you're exactly in greater than that, on the barn status. Yeah.
You know, it's already there.
You know, for instance, you're, you're creating the lot, you're creating the lot, that's one.
Okay. That like, you know, what is that, what is that?
It just requires a remarkable process, just additional information will be squared within the barn or kind of something, but eventually you've got what you need. You've gotta make it need, it doesn't really.
It's not raising that super talent.
So one time, I mean, my surveyor, you'll.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, this is all, this is all private dimensions now, right? But you gotta have this thing reserved, like, when you gotta, when you gotta, like, playing dumb, right, you're sort of, for the tax application from some.
For this.
So all is gonna include, and, and, Jay, we, we might need to just, you know, clarify, but it might need recycler interview just because of the size of the barn, because that's gonna be on a new three year lot. Even those pre-existing, it's on a new three year lot, and nothing changes, the, the building's existing, it'll, you know.
So you just want, you wanna see, you wanna see physically where it's located and how big it is?
Yeah, and we're gonna need, you know, descriptions, property descriptions on all individual lot, showing what they are, I mean, even those here right now, you know. That you could spell out on, on the file, um, location, your, your set big, we know the well, you've got the wall, talk.
No, I, I, I understand that, that's what I, that's what I have to.
He's gotta ask for the waiver and all the rest. Certain. Ten percent.
Except it's. Nothing changed here, wrote there, right?
Being non-performing.
Yeah.
Now.
But it's agricultural use and.
Right. It's a stupid report, we gotta get that out of.
Well, that, that is, but I mean, he, he's already there, it doesn't prior to the code, but, you know, it's on the board. The board.
They've got a thing on the code there, the setback from the front to the side is ten percent. Area.
Oh, I got it.
You're gonna get thousands, this is no problem.
No, no. This one here, I'm not.
You're not, you're not conforming. Not our mind, the building was there prior to the zone, prior to the, the zone, prior to. It's permitted to exist as non-performing, but you can't be made to tear it down because it's subdivision property, there's nothing, that's the change, it's because the road is infected, it's unpropering.
Exactly, you just need to leave dimension now. If you would have built this barn today, it'd have to be eleven hundred feet, most.
Yeah.
Eleven.
Yeah, we've already.
But.
You know, we need to notice to talk to zoning revisions about that and keep eleven hundred.
Yeah, ten percent plus, plus a few other feet there.
Yeah, plus something, yeah.
It's crazy.
I don't even, I don't, I don't think you should be there.
No, he said, he said, no, he wasn't, he only got, you know, three hundred seventy-six feet, this is my ten, I got another hundred fifty-eight years, so you got five hundred and twenty-five things from here to here, going with the track here.
What is this, do you cover?
No, it's in a little bit. So at, at this point, though, I think what you're gonna hear is, you know, the board's implying, we had sketch plan pool tonight, but you, then you go back and, and have a surveyor plot everything, the guy.
Enter.
Five hundred. Uh, we need to plot everything, um, have all dimensions drawn out. Yeah, I, I, I don't, I didn't.
I know where the subject is.
Right.
That's it. I don't know. Be dimensioned out, the word.
Right. And then I think that, you know, whoever does it. Alright, so what we normally have, we have lot A one, lot A two, and lot, what do you have, hole is A three, right, and then these, these imbalance descriptions would be on each lot.
Okay.
Okay, lot one would be starting with point and the dimensions, and we'll be plotting out, lot two will be the same, and then lot three will be the same.
Yeah, cause he said, he said that he was gonna have to, he was gonna have to come back and, and do a fieldwork for the balance.
Right.
This is what I told him, I think, for, for tonight.
Yeah, no, it's part of the time, and the only thing you're going to need is for both of them, for this lot and this lot, you're gonna need more help.
More help, I've been trying to, well, they get managers.
Yeah, because it's essentially going. So you gotta give the show that, that property apart.
So the other thing, Jonathan, this big wetland back in there, so we need to push on the stone and have.
This is, this is like, right, this is like elevators. And any wetlands, well, I'll tell you where, what name it comes.
Does that get far?
Right here.
Oh, they got it, so, alright, not, not that.
Here, I mean, I'm, where, where the house would be, you know where the, you know where the house, the red house on the hill, that sold a while ago, behind me, off of East Banker Room, it was Harp's in mine.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Alright, I'm just the next little hill down from them, and then any wetlands is drop way down from that.
Well, that shows up on the map, and it's, it's checked on, on your, so, this is your property, this one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, um, your surveyor didn't even check that out, and it's part of the zone.
It's kind of like a bit of.
Yeah, but it's on the zoning, that, that kind of stuff should be, we're gonna do a new map that, you know, this way people who buy it are looking at, know that there's wetland or wetland setbacks, uh, on, or building, how we do that.
Yeah. Right, you know, talking to.
Yes.
In order, you wanna be about some elevation?
No, no, this, so this, this, I don't know what this is, from here to here.
That's the, that's the.
But it, but it needs to be fifty feet wide. By hole, this, or the surveyor showed that, if not, then what you gotta do is put with line.
I believe, well, I believe that is, because again, I went through the process prior.
Okay.
So.
Could be, could be, I mean, if this is two hundred, then it, it could be, I don't. Yeah. Then you move on and, I don't think that's.
I should have, I should have brought the original map, yeah, well, just.
I don't wanna bring it a lot because this lot is technically a flat lot, and you're gonna have to.
And there's.
Even if you put these back together again.
Oh.
That's cute.
Now you know scales is a part of it. Does she feed? This would have to be.
I would, I would have been fooled, but.
So we checked, it did look, it did look bad.
There you go.
Alright, so you're good. See, the reason that I know is because when I put a fence. And I like, this is where, this is where the fence was, I put a lot of that twelve feet deep, and then the property lines is like beyond that, and I don't like narrow fence.
Uh, the property lines look very.
I, I think in this one, Bill, I mean, I don't know how quickly you think the surveyor can, you know, put together for you.
Well, I can, I can, you know, he was really good about getting this quickly for me.
Of all the other two, Jay, your perk test on these.
Okay, even though this is already.
That's not perfect. You're kind of building. This is currently a building lot, this is part of it.
I see, I see.
And, and your, your step that goes with this, you're creating the blocks, so that's gonna be first, and you're creating this lot, so this is definitely.
No problem. No problem. Okay, this might want to do this now.
But that's why I, I would probably suggest that we don't try and pick it for the August meeting, September, only because, because it's taking time in the ten day, um, period before the meeting. Which we do have to have it done by the twenty-sixth of this month.
You don't have to help the department out there with this.
Yeah, but I would think, get your, get your, get your bus full of rope, and, and have everything ready, and as long as you get to Jay in, in time, we can establish the, the publicary for the, the September meeting, and then we can go from there. But I, I'd like to see, like, tell, you know, in September for August, you take it done, and I'll be ready for the phone anyway.
That'd be ten days.
My, my, my game plan was to go back to my, uh, my surveyor, and have this set up like a site plan, so he has all the measurements of where everything is. And get this perked, get this perked. Well.
Uh, these could be perked, um.
The ladder.
Yeah, well, you get, you get the ones not from the, no, no, so, totally wetlands.
Some wetlands, right?
I mean, you're gonna take this back, right?
Yeah. You guys can keep one of it, and I think there should be some more over there, too.
John.
Jay is a very helpful guy.
We know that.
The lot description, each lot, you know, separately, I don't know if they.
On the part through here.
Yeah, he deals with guns.
Thank you. The barn and dark.
Oh, how do you have one?
Yeah.
No, no, this part is all, not there.
That works for me.
Did you get the sketch?
Yeah.
They voted?
All the board has said, not wrong.
So.
Make that.
Is it a sketch plan?
Yeah, because you get, because he, I mean, we're, we're agreeing what he's looking to do. As long as he comes in with all the plans, if, if, if nothing's, if it's not perfect, then the site plan, the public hearing keeps going. It just continues. Right, all we do is, we're conceptually agreeing that this is what he wants to do, we're okay with what he wants to do.
That's all.
That's, that's the first, like, sketch one, dude. Beyond that, then took him to make sure they all form, that we go full, if there's any thought in place for the public hearing, then it just can continue on. This, this doesn't stop, this, this doesn't stop the clock for anything other than giving him the, the ability to go out and get all your stuff out.
Go forward, you can do sketch one finally.
Yeah. Um. So, Morgan? We did, so, so, Karen, all fair, I, both, Karen. And, um, Morgan, you were, um. Maybe anything?
Both.
Yeah.
Bobby, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, all fair, both, Karen.
Do you want to help us? Who did you have?
Thank God, we got.
Jay, is that Charlie and Lee from the. That last application, have you got it?
The, the, the rest of Russell?
No, they, they all, they, you know. They think.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why they don't want to do anything.
Um, well, you guys do need to discuss, uh, yeah, a lot.
Right, I didn't, that's what I want, Bill. Yeah, I want to do everything all the time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Five hundred dollars.
I have. Okay, just a couple things, um. You know, after I mentioned the map, the one thing that everyone would need the copy of, um. I think we, uh, compared it to everybody, take a look at it, if you have any comments, objections, uh, on it, get it to Jay. And then what I'd like Jay to do is take all our comments collectively, send them out to everybody, so that we all know what everyone else.
Oh.
And then we can use that as our map for the, uh. But I think, you know, probably go the evidence, but they need it. Uh, I, I, we didn't want to, yeah, I forgot.
They would, they would like one prior to the public hearing, and I believe that's gonna be at the next meeting.
At the end of the month.
Like two weeks.
Yeah, so, I think everyone should get the promise that James did in his week. Um.
Happened to us, I don't know.
Yeah, and Jay did.
You said?
Yeah, yeah.
And I can, I can put the, um, the packet back in the small conference room, so that you guys have access to it.
Right.
It's more than just this? We want a package.
What more can we do?
No.
This is paper called.
Yeah, no, man, I'll give you the paper, they don't. Skip sent me the paper these days, they're gonna have an extra one bed, you know.
Okay, this is like the introduction and, and, yeah, so, that's all of that.
I think that will.
The same thing I, uh, printed on.
Yeah.
So, I'll put this back in the small conference room.
Right.
So, if.
Put that.
I'll put this back in the small conference room.
Okay.
So it'll essentially be available to you even outside of my office.
Yeah. All right, so, that's, that's number one, so at least the part of the one, whatever comments you have. Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah.
In a week, I think.
Yeah, but we only got it, after, we got it after the, the last meeting, after our last meeting. So, you know.
That is, because it was, it was given to us around the town.
Yeah, it was given up right at the last time, would be. So, you know, to come upon us to go through it and make our comments. Uh, that's number one, the other thing we have is, if you recall, um. At the last meeting, we set a, a workshop session slash public hearing, um, for Irons.
That canceled.
No, no, no problem. To review, we have a public comment on part two of the EAF. Which was what we have already completed with NAM. And it was decided that we should allow the public to comment only on the EAF itself. No, not on the merits of the application, not on concerns of the application, but of the items, just like we did, you know, what is a, um, major problem or medium or minor. Right, so let a couple of public comment on that, we agreed to do that for the twenty third. The applicants, um, found out that we had, that they reported in the journals. However, in talking to, um, council and to NAM, uh, we determined that we need to proceed. Full steam ahead, because the bottom line is that we, we told them we would not take any more submissions. Until, um, we gave them a list of our concerns, so they could address that, because we didn't want submissions cropping concerned and back and forth, it just, it money for water to the review. Um, so as a result, we're going to stick to that schedule, which is the twenty fifth of July, Jay. Um, we will.
Twenty fifth, I twenty seventh, we.
We did cancel it, yeah.
We came from the June meeting, but that was, that was the ju- regular June meeting.
No, no, no.
Why, especially me there? Okay, that's the one. But then if we schedule for July, they had since requested a judgment from that, we've determined that we don't think that's appropriate, we'd like to proceed. Because we're going to have to make some determination at the end of this process after the twenty fifth, we're gonna either say. Listen, there's a lot of things that we need to address, here's your list of items, or we don't think you can address those list of items, and here's how you guys proceed from here. We have to be in that position to do that following twenty fifth, and the longer we delay that, the more complicated it's gonna become. So, in advice of council, we're gonna continue with the twenty fifth as the, uh, date for the continued public hearing. Only for the input on the EAF question.
We don't have to go over anything, we're here to listen to the public.
Correct, yeah, I will, I would suggest that we take a look back if they're at the EAF again, and, and we'll have that here, we know what our comments were. And, and how we answered those questions, but going forward, then we'll listen to the public, and we can reevaluate some of their concerns versus what are those.
We're not gonna respond with.
No, there'll be no response to anybody, that's why if the applicant can't make it, doesn't matter, because this is not gonna be a give and take, back and forth dialogue at all. There's certainly gonna be comments, thank you for your comment, we're gonna write it down, and then we'll discuss it again.
The public doesn't know this is, opportunity is available yet, do they?
It will be noticed.
It will be noticed.
Yeah, it happens, public.
Right, okay, so that does, that's a lot.
It's a money, that's correct. It's a money.
Available.
Yeah, that's, that's how we came up with that date.
We have. That is a lot.
I'm gonna go. Yeah. 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 Well, you would be a farm maker if it was all, no one else go.
So, it's.
Yeah. Yeah. Jay, maybe we could just, at some point, reach out to one or more members and try and get an idea of who definitely plans on being here, so we can choose ourselves who we have for them. All right. So, Jay, no, I think one of the, uh, oh, yes, Jay, did you ever get a chance to talk with Pat about the last one? At, then again, about, about the SWIP?
I did not speak to him, I have to speak to Ed about it.
Okay.
Um. I did talk to Ed initially, asked him if he had done the inspection in terms of trying to locate the SWIP, uh, reports. He said he hadn't, and that was following when he came back to the office. Um, so he is aware that he had to go out, or he had to send John out.
All right, now, Joe and I both noticed that the block had been moved at the end of the driving area, both are, I mean, I was gonna drive up in there the other day, but I figured I'd rather wait to find out if he had spoken to him. Either Danny himself or, or Pat.
So, does, is, is Pat supposed to be doing inspections during inspection?
No, I don't, I don't.
That'll be discussed on that other project, and is that like an agreement with the owner?
Yeah, I don't know what agreement he had.
Yeah, right. That was, that was distinct and wholly represented Pat's commitment for the valley, in my memory. Yeah, there's contractors that is with approved versus back.
Right.
So it doesn't have to be the end year.
Like, Jimmy, Sid was approved to contractors, he, when he does the job he can do. And, and who knows, maybe the contractor that's up there is approved, but we're not, we haven't seen it, we're not getting it, and we just aren't going, what's going on?
Yeah, the bank isn't stable, it's aerobic.
Yeah, I know, that's anything.
Much too steep, you know, if.
There's no.
It feels comfortable, doesn't feel comfortable, he can order a physical survey or a rest progression Thursday.
Yeah.
It looks very deep, yeah. And it's not, you know, we get, it's not just a matter of approving the site plan, the site plan has to be followed.
Right.
Well, and, and one of the conditions of their approval is following the condition of the SWIP, so, you know, it's not just site plan, it's also the SWIP. But the grades on the site plan have to be followed.
Right.
It's like this, and it's supposed to be like this, oh, good. Fire truck isn't getting up there, whatever, but, and I don't know if it goes all the way to the top, I can only see the first.
Yeah, I didn't wanna go in there without permission.
We gotta test people, eh? So, I'll, I'll speak to Ed about it, we know that.
Yeah. Okay, everybody good? Any other things?
Not for me.
Um, what should we do with John?
Both.
Second name, second, all fair. All, Carrie.